Thursday. Hello. Hi, everyone. Thursday, August 4th, I'd like to call Travel Council Advisory Board Leader Porter. And who is in attendance is Sharon.
Are we gonna just, I'm Sharon.
Yeah, let's do a quick introduction.
Sharon Porter, yes, board member.
Just a board member.
I see some marketing director of Grand County Economic Development, Jenny Gleason, board member chair.
Hi, everybody. I'm August, economic development director for Grand County. Ben Alter, economic development specialist with Grand County. Let's go online, Lacey.
Lacey Shumway, mob chamber promise.
And then I'll go to Kayla.
Dylan Jones, Moore County Council Liaison.
And maybe the Love team can quickly introduce themselves.
Sure, I'm Alan Riegerd. I'm a partner over brand planning at Love Communications.
And I'm Jonathan Smith-Gall. I am over research, media, and tourism advertising here at Love Communications.
Hi, sorry, I didn't realize McCarron wasn't on. Sarah Wilson, account supervisor at Love Communications.
All right, welcome. Next, let's go into any complex interests disclosures. Any citizens to be heard? I think so. And presentations?
Yeah. I do.
Purchase report?
Yeah.
All right.
Mary, I think she's out of town. But you might be able to.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I will share.
All right, can everybody see the presentation? Online. Okay, we're gonna, I'm just gonna go over a couple commission meetings and actions that are relevant to Travel Council. A quick grant update. The grants closed this past weekend, so Ben has some statistics of kind of what that looks like in a timeline, next steps. A note on strategic planning, and then some visitation statistics. Of which Jonathan, I think that's where I'll plug any Jonathan presentation statistics in there if that works for you.
It sounds great.
But first, I wanted to start kind of on like a fun and optimistic and feel-good note today. And so the Utah Office of Tourism did a really good piece of web content. All based around, you know, the title of the blog article is why your kid needs Utah vacation. And they highlighted Canyonlands Field Institute. They went out on a trip with them to San Juan River. They wrote a great article. They showed a lot of really good photos and they put together a really good video. And just to kind of set the tone for the meeting, I think I'd love it to share that five-minute video. People are up for that. The reason I wanted to share it is I think for me, it really captures a really good way of talking about that education piece, the responsible recreation piece, in a way that's still inspiring, authentic, and I think tells the story of our area and why it's an awesome place to visit without being too preachy and, you know, I think helping to thread that needle that we've been trying to thread as it counts for a little while. So let's, actually, I have it right here, sorry.
Thank you.
Three and a half to four days where our office meets with each evaluation committee. Each grant has its own and we're going to figure out who's going to be recommended for funding. From there it'll go to the commission and hopefully the first September commission meeting, which do you know what day of the month that is? The fifth or the sixth or something? But anyway, so we hope to get this out the
Six.
Six, yeah, so the hope is to get checks to these grant winners in the first or second week of September, assuming that we stay on schedule, which right now we are.
Awesome. Congratulations Ben. Exhausting myself for the last two months.
Yes, and congratulations to all businesses who work so hard to get their materials in. I'm very appreciative of them.
Hey, well, I want to speak a little bit to some strategic planning efforts that are happening locally that I think plug in well to some things we're working on and then some things we're working on and some things I'd like for us to work on. So the city has been working on their tomorrow together community vision project with the future IQ. And this week they had a bunch of focus groups on, as you can see on the right, kind of tackling all the big issues in town, so tourism trajectory and economic diversification, affordability and equity, leadership and decision making, environmental stewardship, housing and workforce and that community fabric well being. I attended all of the lunch sessions and learned a lot, felt like I contributed a decent amount and yeah, kind of came away feeling pretty inspired, I would say, with regards to appetite from the community to kind of move forward on a lot of stuff and leave behind maybe some extreme positions on things in order to create forward progress. And that was just, I don't know, it was good to, it was good to see that and see people who I hadn't seen kind of participate before. Jason, I don't know if you want to city or Kaylin even, I guess you're not here as a city guy technically. But I guess, yeah, just it's been really great and Kayla, I don't know, it's like you have anything to add to that particular piece?
No.
Okay, um, sorry, go ahead, Kayla.
What, I was just shaking my head and saying no, thank you for bringing
Okay, thanks Kayla. Um, I, I bring it up although it's not a county process because I think so much of the conversation around developing a strategic plan towards them and economic development generally is, is really high quality public engagement and trying to get a better pulse of getting a buy-in really for whatever future plan we put out there. And I think that this process has done that tremendously well and I'd really like to whatever plans that we put forward, take advantage, not to advantage, but build off of that process and ensure that, you know, we're not doing fitting work, but we're really leveraging existing public forums and conversation. Which leads me to one of the big kind of takeaways from that process that David, that facilitator has repeated every single time we've talked about it is that kind of by and large the community is an appetite to move towards you know, locally controlled planned futures, whatever that looks like. And that we're, if we don't do something about it, we're probably going to end up somewhere where we're trying hard, but still things are happening basically as usual. And how do we move to that future? And a big part of that is the planning part. And so I think that we're well on our way with the economic development strategic plan, which is linked to here, I'm not going to go into it in detail, but if you, if members want to take a look at it. We went into it in detail, the economic development board meeting, but really kind of laying out a clear vision of, of you know, objective assessment, community engagement, understanding where we are and then giving us a pretty clear action plan for the next three to five years, what our office is going to do, how we're going to spend, how we should spend our resources and plan to ensure that we continue to have those resources into the future. The other piece is the kind of the twin to that plan, which is the tourism strategic plan. There was a conversation initially about having that a part of the economic development strategic plan process, but thinking that the consultants who are doing that work are going to be slightly different and that's slightly different expertise. And so a project for me, as soon as that piece is kind of completed is to scope out an RFP for the tourism strategic plan based off of kind of my, our peers and other mountain communities that have that similar work and have met some really good consultants who work in that space and conferences. But, but expect that to come down the pipe soon. And I just think that's really important so that we do have a plan for the next couple of years that we can kind of lay out in the obviously things change and we have to react to it, but you know, having a mandate so that we go to the budget process we were asked for. Any questions on that process or what I would like to see from board members or anything like that? No, okay. Ben walked away for his section, so I'll start talking here. So we just, you know, last time we met, we had already, we've been looking at this kind of on a monthly basis. We have all of June and July data, which is new since we last spoke on, so you know, we don't have, we're just looking for the 2022, 2021 baseline, which we all know has some problematic notions, but still gives a general idea of where we're at. So, you know, January and February, we're, we're above average, we were above last year, which I think that's pretty incredible in and of itself. And then March down, April down more, May down about the same, June down about the same, and then July actually coming back way better relatively speaking. And as you can see kind of over here, occupancy is that kind of coming back together after being kind of separated for a little while there.
Just, yeah, you're good.
Is that typical because it's summer break?
Well, I mean, this is based off of an average, but previous year average, right? So
Because it's, because I understand like the other ones, like school breaks, you know, they always differ every year, so it's kind of a helps out with numbers that they're always not going to be on par because it's in states.
Whereas summer break is always now.
Yeah.
Just number is hotels.
This hotel occupancy, yeah, to be clear, this is the star report, so this is basically of all of our hotel properties, seventy-five percent of them report.
I would tell we that the general manager of Marriott and she said that her numbers, I mean that occupancy is good, is higher than last year, but because she reduced the prices of the
Good segue.
So this is occupancy, not pricing.
Correct. Yep.
So she's saying
Rooms rented, not
Yeah, of a percentage of the supply available, how many of those rooms market wide are full?
Okay.
Just that six months is kind of hard to tell, so these are, this is the new data, right? So, you know, seeing that under pretty consistently in June on those weekend peaks and then the July fourth weekend actually outperforming last year from an occupancy standpoint and kind of coming together for whatever reason at the end of July and having a pioneer to again, that was exactly the same as last year. So here's the ADR piece on so up, 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 down in June, down in July, but still pretty close. So, you know, market wide, ADRs came down from this kind of super inflated level to try to kind of be more competitive based off of that occupancy level. And I'm wondering if, if that's why the occupancy is leveling out because the ADR is leveling out a little bit. But, but if you can see back here, the ADR is actually realigning at the end of July. So I don't know if that's signaling, kind of getting back to less bit of volatility based off of gas prices or all that, all that kind of stuff, it's hard to read into all of that, but anyway. That's the ADR picture.
I forget what they were talking about Chanel and Daniel, I don't remember them on the call, but just that world mark got added, but the other one got taken away.
And that's, and that's not showing in the supply, world, because world mark I think technically was like around, and I don't know if world marks, because it's a timeshare, if they're counted the same way that other hotels are counted.
It just changed.
Or did?
Yeah, I think like a month ago.
So I'll have to check if that is, I have not seen any change to supply number. This, our supply number is two thousand seven hundred and seventy rooms and that hasn't changed all year. And so I don't know if world mark is counted into that or not. But that's a good point. Yeah, and they are kind of a new player in a different way. Again, kind of coming back to last two months lower than last year's ADR, lower than last year's ADR and then actually coming above it this last weekend for whatever reason. So visa spend by month on market wide again above last year in January, above last year in February, above last year in March, above last year in April, below last year in May, you know, which is, and below last year in June. And we're seeing that show up in tax revenues for the county for sure. I'm sure that's also what we're seeing in businesses locally. Okay, Zeski's full quarterly kind of report from the first quarter of the year. Up historically. International spending
There was no international last year.
Relative to zero, it's looking great.
Yes.
Um, but it's still probably ten percent, six percent, you know, way lower than a full international visitation calendar. Comparing Arches National Park visitation to other areas. So we've got two thousand eighteen in green, two thousand nineteen in orange, twenty-one in yellow, twenty-two in blue. Kind of outperforming or about same up until March, time entries implemented. And you're seeing us kind of plateauing here by a pretty significant amount. Canyonlands seeing a, kind of a seeing last year is like super out of whack, but Canyonlands about same as historical trends. Bryce Canyon seeing a fall off from that June peak that they had last year and previous year. So interesting to see that Bryce is actually below trend for pre-COVID. For whatever reason. But they did outperform twenty twenty-one July numbers. And then Zion National Park also had this huge COVID twenty twenty-one bump. And seeing a much flatter curve there. But outperforming twenty eighteen about the same with twenty nineteen. Sorry, doing your second.
No, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Good job. So yeah, these, these, that's kind of like the snapshot there. It's before we get into Jonathan's piece, it's probably a good opportunity to maybe like gut check these with what people are seeing on the ground or any concerns or thoughts or
So like the Arches one?
Yeah.
Is that the new norm?
We don't know.
Like, so is, is it at that baseline because of reservations?
Most of it's reservation, I say, some of it could be possibly could be gas prices, because you can actually go on in the morning and get a reservation for a safe day. I could see, there's still reservations available.
Yeah.
They're not all sold out.
I think it's the perception of it rather than the actual limits imposed by it. Because the, the supply cap, like I think if it was fully booked, you'd see probably up like right here.
Yes.
And it would just, I think this flatness is the goal, right?
Yes.
To limit some of that peak, but like I think that if it was at full capacity, it'd be higher than this current.
Right, so it, so it'd be like, but those higher numbers would, would probably be that it's allocated for the popular times, right? And so working into that average is the times that are not sold out. So that's kind of bringing the average down, right?
Yeah.
So
And I think people just not wanting to bet their vacation on the ability to gamble on getting one, even though it turns out it's been pretty phenomenally easy to get one.
And it's actually, we haven't had as many people coming in. Well, we didn't know about this, we didn't, you know, so I think
You're not getting that.
We did a good job there.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting the word out. It's not as bad now, my staff is not dealing with a lot of that. Most of the issues now is actually with recreation.gov. It's not that they're available, it's recreation.gov, there's a, a lot of the international credit cards that will work with it.
Really?
There's some, a lot of them are MasterCards, international MasterCards that, I mean, you know, so we're having to kind of help them try to get it. And then also for some reason, people are, because you have to have an email address. And some people are, they come in and then they go, my staff's going, well, what email, you have an email? Well, yeah, well, what, when are you using? Well, it's in the iCloud. There is no email in iCloud, but there's somehow it's putting it, it's some kind of an email that goes through iCloud, but does not really exist.
Right, well, because I think every, every Apple user has an iCloud account.
But it's attached to an inbox.
Right, but there's no inbox.
Or something like that.
So we have to tell them to get, that they have to put a difference, you know, they have to put an actual email address in there.
Yeah, and, and, and kind of stepping back from those really granular issues, I've also been hearing that for international travelers, it's just been hard, they plan so far ahead of time. This is very hard for them to factor in, if you can only reserve a month ahead of when you want to come. Three months, sorry, whereas they planned even further ahead than three months. That being said, of course, there are still those day availabilities, but again, the perception is, we're battling against the perception more than the actual availability of tickets.
But I think we've had a lot of international visitors, we've had a lot of people from France and lately, a lot.
So also do, I think Jenny asked this question last time about visitation, if the parks are counted by car, by person, by bus?
It's, it's, they have their own way they do it, because there, there's actually two different numbers from Arches. One is coming through the gate. The other one is actually coming into the visitor center, because we have door counters on the visitor center and I get those, I get actually both of them. Yeah, I gave them to
Maybe I would remember it's blocked over there because now people are coming with buses more.
No, because buses have always been in the, in the mix, they've always been in the mix, we've always had buses, so that's always coming in.
I would wager that the number that the Arches visitation count misses of actual people consistently misses that. And I think the trends we're looking at here are still sound, right? Even if we're off by a couple hundred or thousands.
I think it's still good number, the only numbers that aren't good numbers to good numbers is what I was telling bandwidth is the inside the visitor center, because we're going against last year, the park service was outside.
Right.
Yeah. So the only people coming in, because right now it says the inside visitation is up. But that's because park service people are inside, so everybody's coming in now where before it was only whoever came into the store.
Right.
What about twenty nineteen?
I'm going to, I told him I was gonna, I needed to do that, I'm gonna do it against twenty nineteen, I just haven't had a chance. And I need to do the visitation against twenty nineteen.
And I think the only other piece that I've been thinking more about, which we're all aware of, is folks who are visiting the park outside the hours where they're counting them.
And they're still counted on the road.
They're still counted on the road.
Yes, as far as coming in, there, the count, there's, it's a car counter.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, great.
Twenty-four hours.
Yes. There's a car counter.
Oh.
Lacey, you're unmuted, I assume you have some thoughts.
Uh, I think it's all kind of been said.
Cool, well, I'm ready to move on for some, some greater, bigger picture tourism industry context, Jonathan, if you want to provide.
Of course, yeah, I'd love to.
Allow you to share your
Yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't. Do you want to look at that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just go to the next one. Yeah, I just, I'm fine with visa to get the twenty nineteen numbers because they exist, but I, I found some like old protected spreadsheet that Elaine had, that I had access to, but we're, you know, we're up from twenty nineteen.
Ben, you may want to ask, you may want to ask Adam if he's got that ingested somewhere.
Ooh, thank you.
Protected sheet, we may, we may have it.
Awesome, I'll check it out, thank you.
I'm also wondering if there is, because all of this could be a little bit distorted just because of inflation and if there's any type of like, you know, percentages or whatnot that we could get from the data to see how it, you know, if our inflation percentage outweighs or not.
Could be able to inflation adjust all of the, all of the GDP type data.
Yeah, inflation's nine point one percent. You're, so, like for that, I don't, I don't know that we have July's.
It's going to hit, it's going to feel good. Any step. Sorry. Go for it, Jonathan.
Let's go for it, okay. So as I normally would do, you're seeing travel sentiment?
Yeah.
We're going to start with reasons for concern and then jump into reasons to be optimistic, because I like to end on good things and, and not harp on, on some of the concerning trends. So kicking things off, what I wanted to point out was daily TSA throughput. And what you're seeing here is that there was a moment back in twenty twenty-one where daily TSA throughput was catching up to what it was in two thousand nineteen. The green line here is two thousand nineteen, red is twenty twenty-two. And what's happening is all of the news around the travel issues around flights being delayed, luggage being lost and flight price increases is leading to what we're starting to see here, which is to drop, a slight drop off in those using air travel. Now, research went out last month, it was collected all month of July and, and this is, the, the data was released August first. And it asked travelers, before taking the survey, were you aware of, of this situation specifically related to the airline industry? And what you see here is that seventy-five percent of people said yes, they were aware that the airlines were having issues. They followed up with this question and what they found was that thirty percent of travelers agreed that due to the recent issues, they're not planning to travel by air this summer. Now, this, this is, you know, a concerning stat when you have a third of the population saying that. But I don't want to share a stat and not show the other, other end of this, and that is thirty-seven percent of people who were surveyed in this said that they disagreed with the stat and that the, the problems airline industry is having is not going to impact them, so it almost washes it out. However, you can't ignore a third of the country saying that. The other thing that I want to point out, yes, we are seeing trends drop. And what I did here is I looked at daily travel index compared to two thousand and nineteen across the entire country. Now, this is for the last twenty-eight days. Obviously, the last twenty-eight days have been very volatile. But what you see here in the state of Utah alone, compared to twenty nineteen, travel, daily travel is down about seven point two percent. Obviously, there are destinations like Wyoming, which are down significantly higher. Obviously Yellowstone had, had some issues with the, the storms and flooding that they've been through. But across the country, we are seeing a downward trend. One of the main reasons for that is that gasoline for the longest time, really three months now, was deemed too expensive. But what I want to point out that continues to rise is people starting to list personal financial reasons as, as a reason why they are holding off their travel planning for the next six months. Another thing that I want to say is, is this, the survey, what's amazing about it is we have three years of data from it now. And what I wanted to compare was the same question that we asked last year and this, this question asked, you're seeing twenty-seven percent of travelers saying that now is a good time to spend money on travel, on leisure travel specific. At this same time period last year, only forty-four percent of travelers felt that it was a good time to spend money on travel. And another thing that this is probably of the presentation in terms of the concern section, this is the one that concerns me the most. And that is you've had thirty percent of travelers actually cancel a trip because of the recent increases in inflation. Now, August, you talked about the drop in visa spend. That is, that's literally what travelers said, who, the travelers who said they're still planning to travel and go vacation have said that they're going to spend less in market to make up for the increased costs of gas in the, the hotels that they're staying in. So I'm not surprised to see that we've seen a drop off in daily spend habits from, from people using Visa credit cards. So we've made it through the, the reasons to be concerned and we're going to jump into reasons to be optimistic. And what I wanted to point out is, is we are seeing this collective feeling that it is a good time to have travelers back in the community. Obviously, in the beginning of the pandemic and really through the first year and a half, people just didn't want travelers in their communities, both because it, you know, it was created crowding and it was a bit of a risk for travelers. In terms of what travelers want to prioritize for this, this next year, spending time with loved ones and the third most requested answer was enjoying nature. And this is, you know, Moab's product is something that you can really capitalize on the fact that it's a great place to spend time with your loved ones and obviously there's a lot of nature to get, get into and have some fun. I would even throw bucket list travel in there as well.
Jonathan, can you go back one slide?
Yes, definitely.
Other thing I'm seeing on there is that fifty-five percent are trying to go to new places they haven't visited before. And, and I, I would, I would venture to bet that all of those people who had their sugar high adventure down here last year have their Moab fix and now they're like, hey, I don't want, I'll go there, where am I going next, right?
Yeah, that's, it's a, that's a trend that emerged post-COVID. So about a year into COVID, everyone wanted to go to places that they had been to before, because if they were going to make the risk, they wanted to visit somewhere that they knew was going to be a good experience. Actually have that variable isolated somewhere in here where it's not select for many. And it is, it's about fifty-three percent of the population saying they want to visit new places in twenty twenty-two. However, I would argue that there's always the opportunity to retarget someone who's visited your community and explain the additional itinerary items that they can enjoy when they return. Because you've already, they've had a great experience, it's the easiest way to get a good traveler, someone who's going to spend time in the community, because they know that they can extend their trip with how much there is to do in Moab. I wanted to
Kayla asked a follow-up question in the chat.
Oh, sorry, let me, let me pull it up.
I was just curious how this has shifted in the last few years. Because like, are the prospects getting better or worse in terms of what Moab has to offer?
Yeah, so pre-COVID, enjoying nature was not in the top five of, of things that people were prioritizing for their travel experiences. I've been looking at this trend data for this very specific question for three years now and enjoying nature has remained in the top three the entire time. What's always been concerning is as COVID emerged, getting away from crowds was something that people continued to bring up. And I think when we first added the time entry conversation on our Arches, I think that created this fear that, oh, they're going to time entry because of how crowded it is. However, as, as you guys were just speaking, travelers are less, less confused about the, the process and I think we're in a, a good place there. But what I would point to is enjoying nature and spending time with loved ones is still very strong for the Moab area. And the other thing, there's, there's actually a stat in here that I'll get to in, in a second that actually talks about active vacations, that's a priority now. Pre-pandemic, that was not as popular as it is now, and that's another good point for, for the Moab area. What is, you know, you could ask this question, question any, anytime. And it's always with road trips, road trips is always going to be the most common way that people travel. So no surprises here, but you are seeing if the recession, if we are in a recession, if we're heading into recession, road travel is almost always the, the thing that picks up the most. And so I would imagine you'd see something similar to what kind of emerged in the beginning of the pandemic. In terms of when people are planning to travel, August, obviously, whenever you ask a survey question, the immediate month is going to be the highest rated number, but you do see a big uptick in the people, a surprising amount of people actually still planning that winter travel, November and December. I want to talk about Utah specifically, because what's starting to happen, Utah used to be in the top fifteen of destinations people wanted to travel to nationwide. Right now, it's sitting in the thirty-sixth position. Now, this is out of four hundred and thirty different destinations that people, this is an unaided question, so four hundred and thirty-six options appeared. And it's in the, currently in the thirty-sixth position. But if you isolate this to just people who have answered from the west, Utah is in the top twenty. And that's something that we see anytime there's a recession, you start to, to narrow your focus on where you feel, where you feel comfortable traveling to for a vacation. Now, this was the stat I was actually talking about, so almost half of the population prefers an active vacation, which is another great point for us in, in our area. The other thing that has emerged, this is definitely some, a new trend coming out of the pandemic and that is people starting to be a bit more socially conscious about their impact when they're traveling. Now, our research shows that you do have to get in front of these people because they're not seeking it out. So you have to make sure you're intercepting them with messages that, that will prepare them for what they're about to experience. But if you do ask this question in aided fashion, more than half the population says that they want to limit their personal impact when traveling. Now, the last few things that, no, August, you mentioned this before, but this is if it's an isolated question. And, and the question was, how much are you prioritizing visiting new places? And this is where you get And this is where you get 53.7% of people saying that they want to visit new places. We talk about people staying longer in communities. The one reason I kept remote workers in here is because you're still seeing about 30% of American workers are still in some fashion or another considered remote workers or have the hybrid system. And with that, you've got about 23% of them being able to take vacations or, or go work remotely for 10 days or longer in destinations. That's a, that's an audience that hasn't disappeared since COVID started. I think the last thing that I want to leave with, before I get into one Expedia screenshot, is you still find that 81% of people are open to travel inspiration. So even though at the beginning I was giving you all the reasons to be concerned, people are still in a place where they're still open for inspiration of where they want to visit. And then one last piece of, of information, we get this information, information from Expedia, looking specifically at Moab. And what I wanted to point out, compared to 2019, the dark gray bars are 2019, the dark blue is 2022. We do see that the fall is looking positive at this moment in terms of bookings for visitation to Moab. So I'm with that, as always, I like to end with some optimism. If, does anyone have any questions about anything that we've run through? Awesome. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, I have a question. Jonathan, um, so it said people are canceling trips. What kind of timeframe was that typically in? Was it 30 days or?
Yeah, it was, it was in the next 60 days. Have you, have you canceled a trip in the next 60 days due to inflation? 30%. Which actually, I mean, like in a, in a positive way, that's, that number's dropped a little bit since last month. Last month, it was like 36%, which is crazy.
Jonathan, after this meeting, can you share your presentation with us, please?
Always. Yeah, this, this is always available to you. I compile these monthly, so always, this is always available.
Appreciate it. I'll, I'll put it in a Google Drive folder that we've created for this board, so you'll have everything for this meeting in one place.
Thank you.
All right, Jenny.
Um.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, discussion action items. So everyone been able to evaluate the two grants that they handed out?
I did not send it out, so I did not. We just got them on today.
Yeah, like, let's, yeah. Um.
I can speak a little bit just to remind ourselves like where we're at on that. So we, for the 2022 budget of $55,000, we allocated $3,6700 already for the 2021 Folk Fest and about 10 grand to 2022 Folk Fest, the same amount for the 2022 free concert series. So we had 18,300 remaining. And it was that amount that we were bringing to publicize that we had some money available for the rest of the year. Rachel reached out to the upcoming event holders. And we got two, we did a pretty quick turnaround because we wanted to consider these on a slightly faster basis than the, kind of the 2023 request. On, and with that in mind, we're hoping to this, that we do have those, those grants, the special event grant and the community event grant for 2023 available until the end of the month. So we'll continue to push that out and we will kind of need to evaluate that.
So these two are for this year?
These are for this year.
These are to, for the 18.
This is for money that's already budgeted, allocated, not allocated, budgeted for this year, not allocated so far.
This one is asking for the total amount.
Correct. Yep. So they read, they read the information. Uh, yeah, so we have two and I'll go over them at a high level. And then it might be useful just to kind of read some of the subsections of this. On, and for context, if we feel really good about this, we can make a decision today. If you want to schedule interviews and have a special meeting for that, we can do that as well.
But.
Okay.
But we might not be able to give them everything.
Well, we can't. We have to figure out some kind of funding amount. So let's, let's dive into the first one here.
Yeah, that one's easy.
All right. So the Muck Canyon's endurance ride. Can anybody, everyone all.
Anyone speak to it? Like, has anyone personally been there or seen it?
Um, my cousin's wife actually has done this before.
Okay.
Has been involved in this event before. And I, I kind of like, it's, you know, it's, it's not a new event, but they've never asked for money before. It's new owner.
Yeah.
To try to keep it going.
So maybe I'll just read through the description, not that long, so just so we're all on the same page. So time is, it's the September 30th through October 2nd weekend. As a reminder, we got rid of like the specific month constraint on this program. And it's in the Dublinsky Wells area, part of Wash, Canyon, so kind of off of 191 near the airport, south of that. And the event has run from 2018 to 2018 by Sherri Griffith, Nikki, I believe is the, Michelle, yeah. Um, goes by Nikki. First, just the event basically is the first I'm running it. It's a sanctioned horse riding event. They cover 15.25 or 50 miles a day. It's the same riders per day. Of course, their flag, different route, but 150 miles of trails that they use. All ages and ethnic groups, including in the endurance horse riding community, people over the US, childhoods event. Typically admit to higher level income group as owning, training, traveling with these expensive horses, not a cheap sport. For instance, horses and horse people are loaded back to the environment and travel through and leave little trace of our passing. We utilize old cow camps, camping locations so that the hay and the nor are not an impact to other recreationalists. In general, horse eventists are very good at leaving a trace and cleaning out themselves. Cleaning camps, holding areas of debris, trash. Will also work closely with the local backcountry horseman chapter that is located here in Grant County. Local riders compete and volunteer their time to help promote the continuous horse in the backcountry. Event marketing plan, so far, I have the event listed in the horseback riding, endurance riding something magazine and have made cards to hand out at Mountain Region Endurance Rides Conferences, the page, Facebook page. Like upgrade the webpage, send us some emails if you'd like to make a few handouts and posters. Also purchase an ad in the magazine for the next ride, this year and next year's rides. The requested amount is $3,000, anticipating 18 grand entry fee revenue, total cost of 24, 300, 24, 400. So this would get them closer to solvency. So the capital investment, it's cost of the business plus all the equipment, such as the water tanks and trucks and trailers. There is a constant point waterfall events. Our own money funds the ride for now, making up to its pay for itself so that it can continue to put out some event that looks like it. So asking about this pot of money of TRT's focus on grad reputation. How is this going to accomplish cycle? All of our competitors will be driving from my area to compete and some will stay for a whole week before traveling home. On my face webpage, I promote the travel destination and all it has to offer. I know that many people travel to the area or their horses at the Old Spanish Trail Arena so that they can enjoy other attractions. Plan to use the grant money to increase my advertising, such as develop signs and posters, postcard mailers and improve my website. There are several writing magazines that I would like to put an ad in, both online and paper format. What is the goal of the event? To provide opportunity for horse riding enthusiasts to ride in and enjoy the training at County. I've had past participants, some new, tell me this ride's been a bucket list ride, but they're very disappointed when the ride stopped because of the team. Uh, what means to be used to get these successful events, the number of riders at the next event, maybe some sort of also a comment box to gauge events' success. Uh, it's paying 150 participants. Two additional people per party, 10% staying in lodging, 10% staying at horse campgrounds, 50% eating at restaurants. 90% visitors are locals, anticipating pre-high spend for personal trip. Very high spend. On, before we talk too much about it, maybe read the next application, just kind of get the context.
Or, or do you want to talk about this one?
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, sure. When I first saw it, it was like, oh, this is, I mean, because we do the mountain biking events, the running events. We do, you know, the ATV, all this, I mean, not as far as grants, but it's actually having events here. And so it's, it's a different one. It's a different group of people, a whole different group of people. Horse, horse people are a total different breed. And like she did say, they do watch what they do in the, in the backcountry and take care of it and, and all that. So, and that, that piqued my interest. And like I said, my cousin's wife has done this event before. And said good things about it. And I know they did stay here. You know, they didn't stay in a hotel, they did camp, but they did stay in the area. For an extended, you know, not just while they were riding, so.
Yeah, I like the idea of that it's, it's, it's a local event that's coming back to life.
Right.
And although it's not, it's no longer operated by a Grant County resident, continuing wanting to be here. And, you know, bringing something back that we care about, I think it's worth noticing, within the context of typically this event grant program, trying to create new events.
The last time they did it was 2017, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's definitely-
It's only $3,000.
Yeah.
I mean, that's minimal for what actually spending?
Yeah.
That is minimal. That's not, that's, you know, she's 24,000, she's only asking for three.
I agree 100%. I think, and I also think it's good, I mean, I know that our rodeo and the arena and all of that have been trying to kind of bolster and bring back, you know, these types of events anyway, so it would, it would, you know, in turn serve the county as well. So, or could serve the county as well.
Jason, any thoughts?
That's good.
Kayla, any thoughts?
Nope.
Okay. Um. Seems like my, my instinct could be that look at the next one, see if it makes sense and see how we could fund this one and then see how that looks.
Okay. Do have a question. Is there a formalized scoring process for these grants?
Um, they're, we will probably institute that for the full year. In the, in the, especially event grants have basically just come for the travel council. And the travel council has kind of used the program guidelines and best judgment to make recommendations to the county commission. Obviously, we've built a very robust scoring process for the other grant programs that we've created. And this money, we just wanted to get out there. So for now, this particular round, right now, there's no scoring process besides, does this fit the guidelines? Does this feel like a good use of this money that's already pledged it for this purpose?
Yeah, might be something to think about for the future, just to organize the reasoning a little bit more.
Definitely. And I think we'll work to do that for the requests for 2023. And we, we, we just kind of tried to make this happen while we were flying with the other grant machine. So, no, good point, Kayla. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, okay, let's go to the other one. Everyone still can see this? Great. Okay, so, um, this is for the Red Canyon Powwow. Last year, a different event, Red Sands Powwow happened earlier in the year. It's the same organizer, Jacob Crane, but via a different organization. And slightly later in the year, slightly more ambitious in scope. Weekends are October 22nd to 23rd at, at the Old Spanish Trail Arena. I was there at the event last year. I thought it was really great. And so the description, Red Canyon Powwow is a two-day cultural celebration being held at the Old Spanish Trail Arena with showcase Native American culture, dances and songs. The event is for all ages and brings people together from a variety of backgrounds, five pop, LGBTQ, 2S+ communities. Dancing and singing begins on the 22nd at noon and ends at 10:00 PM. Sunday dancing and singing begins at noon and ends at 5:00 PM. Variety of arts and crafts will be set up for visitors to purchase goods. Red Canyon Powwow is for all ages and people from different backgrounds and ethnicities. Although traditionally Powwows are for Native American people to participate in and benefit from. We understand that building bridges between communities is very important. And we recognize that native and non-native people will be served through small business activities and participants at the Powwow who compete in this contest dancing. A large majority of Native American people live in today's society and are faced with economic barriers. And due to COVID-19 pandemic, which is why hosting events like the Red Canyon Powwow provide an opportunity for the Powwow community, Native American community and the general public to have a chance to benefit financially throughout the weekend. Sustainability, responsible recreation, best practices. Native American people have a strong understanding of stewardship of traditional lands. These practices are deeply tied to the understanding that we must care for the land that we walk upon and practice being good relatives to the land. This event plans to be an environmentally friendly Powwow. This year, we are promoting recycling, carpooling, cleanup of the venue. And our MC will tell stories of caring for the land through indigenous lands. This is how we'll promote sustainable practices and responsible recreation throughout the weekend. Marketing and advertising plan, we have contracted a Native American artist to help put together a flyer for us to support advertising the event. Last year, we worked with the Vibe Happenings, local media outlets, radio stations and social media platforms to ensure a successful event. We plan on doing this approach again, but would like to pay for videography services before and during the weekend so that our marketing and advertising performance increases here to here. We can provide a video to help showcase Native American dancing. We would have something that will attract more visitors to the Powwow. We also would like to utilize micro influencers to help support the event and pay them a small honorary for their time. This is how we plan on getting word out about this year's Powwow. They request the full amount available for the program for the rest of the year. The revenue entry fees is $10 per, they're anticipating 1,000 paying participants. So that would be 10 grand, I think that actually adds up to this number. Um. So the cost that they've put in here, so I would imagine what they're planning to spend the grant money on, it's unclear to me if they have greater costs.
That's what I was wondering is, because they're asking for the same, what it costs.
Yeah, so I would imagine this is what they're going to spend the grant on rather than their total expenses because their revenue is much higher than what they're saying. And maybe that's a clarifying question we asked them. Um. I'll just keep describing here. So our committee will use this grant to help cover various expenses for the Powwow. The host run Blackstone Singers, $10,000 performance fee. As 10 members who will be singing and performing throughout the event, these expenses are listed on the budget. But also recognize that we have staff that will be traveling from Utah County area. And we'll need gas and costs covered, which is why there's another 400 plus that are other. Because most of the people on our committee for the Red Canyon Powwow have worked diligently since April 2022 for the event. 11 individuals have been getting a total of 8 grand in kinds due to the fact that we have been meeting regularly once a week since April 1st. And two people have been working part-time on this event since April 1st, which is a successful event. Below. I thought it was worth noting that the organizer themselves contributed $1,500 of their money. And local Julian Waters contributed $1,500.
And there's a typo in this one.
Where is the typo?
Currently, we're charging $10,000 per person.
Yeah.
Yeah, not going.
It could, it could just be, uh, yeah.
It's $10, $10.
Yeah, there you go. Last year, we had a total of 882 people walk through the event during the weekend. We're estimating we'll have 1,000 individuals enter the Red Canyon Powwow to bring revenue to 10 grand. The grant is paid for with TRT, designated for driving visitation, how you get your compensation. Majority of the grant will be used to bring performers to the area that will draw in a larger than usual crowd to the area of Grant County and Moab. Contractors of Blackstone Singers were top 10 in the Native American singing championships in the world. And they're also using the same venue from last year's power, Powwow, that is perfect for a power that's outside of the canyon. Because OSA is great. Grand County is famous for its beautiful landscape and scenery. We're utilizing videography to help showcase the story of the dancers and the land to market and advertising the event on social media platforms, newspapers, radio, et cetera. Small portion of the grant will be used on permits and administration fees. It will help with ensuring that we have the proper steps in process to move the product forward. What is the goal? Very nature of the Powwow is to bring people together. It is a celebration where everyone can come together through sharing culture, songs, food and dance. How, how I was, were and still are a social gathering, different tribes came together to share a song and dance, traditional teachings and trade. Today, we'll stick, carry on those traditions, teachings and continue to share culture with all visitors. Throughout the Powwow, the MC and arena director will share various teachings, explain certain dances and the cultural significance of the audience. They strive to make all feel welcome and included to help bring communities together. The Red Canyon Powwow is an opportunity for indigenous youth to practice their culture on a large platform as well as learn dances. For many indigenous youth going to Powwows and participating is one of the main pillars of their identity. It's a place they make lifelong friends. While most Powwows are competition today, there are various social dances like inter-travel and round dances throughout the event where everyone is welcome to join and dance together. These dances sprinkled throughout the Powwow are always a crowd favorite because all are welcome. Indigenous are not indigenous to come and learn and dance. Friendship and communities are good things. Uh, what is success? Success is meeting a thousand people entering the event during the weekend, which is the goal. Writing short survey on whether or not we should be hosting the Powwow in Grand County. Lastly, the amount of partnerships and relationships that our organizations make during the weekend is indicated that we're successful because people are choosing to support this event physically and financially. We're not going to go too much into this, but just anticipating from and decent spend for visitor. Quarter percent staying in commercial camp grounds. And I think they just set numbers instead of percentages there. Uh, so that's the overview. I'd be curious what people are thinking about a funding proposal for these two, given that we have eighteen three totals.
What is your question? Would you consider the recommendation of funding proposal for the meeting?
That's that's basically so that we have an actual action item that we can make a motion on. Because the first one is just looking at the information. So Jenny, if you want to present this, that agenda.
I want this one first.
Yes, talk about it.
I like this. I'm just, what concerns me is he's asking, you know, he maybe we need to clarify what his actual expenses are because if if this is his actual expenses, we shouldn't be paying for his whole event.
Right.
That's, you know. I I just don't, I that's my personal thing. The event, yes. I just don't think we should be paying for someone's whole event.
I think that's super reasonable. And I think it would give, I mean, if we fund that amount, it'd be higher than if it's any of the other.
Right. My other.
Well, that was, sorry, that was going to be my, my question too, is, is there a precedent for, you know, funding something that would then be like a hundred percent profit? Type deal? I don't know if there's a precedent.
As as it looks like, they're making twice as much like, why, why do we need to fund it? If their revenue is twice their total expenses.
Right.
Doesn't, it's not a good, not saying that we're getting them over the finish line in that way, right?
Yeah. Just commenting on having gone to the other grant process, you advertise as much as available, you'll get people who are applying for as much as available. But if the emphasis for this grant is eventually moving people towards a place of financial sustainability, it's probably a conversation worth having no matter what is awarded.
I mean, would we be able to just to give him, give them less and then just keep the rest as a you know, and like roll it over for next years? Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility. I think I.
I, right now, it's, it's hard to spend money. It's hard to spend it all. I feel like we need to keep some. With the T R T numbers going down and, you know, numbers are going down. I I feel like if we want to continue doing grant, if we don't have to spend it all, we need to save some.
I guess the only thing I want to say about that is there's so much set aside, and that's why I wanted to kind of emphasize, like, just put it forward. I don't support giving them everything. I mean, especially, it was just kind of the thing you said, like, to keep it, if they're going to keep it here, like, oh, like, okay, I don't want to pay for your event and then have you move it.
Right.
And I guess the other thing is maybe to go for both of these to definitely have, like, funded or sponsored by, um, you know, like this grant or, you know, like the funds to acknowledge that. Going forward.
Sure, in the grant contract in some way.
Yeah. Or just kind of have that part of the stipulation, like, hey, we're giving you this much money, we would like to have some kind of sponsorship.
So that was actually part of the grant language previously, when it was the event advertising grant. And we had sort of, when Rachel and I were redoing this to make it into the special event grant, we had received direction that because the county wants to focus less on advertising, remove that aspect of it.
Well, in that case, that was like, use our logo when you're advertising, which I think is distinct from sponsor, some kind of sponsorship.
I agree. Yeah, I'm just saying, that's why that was taken out, and I think it's a great idea in the future to add that back.
Well, I think that's, you know, what is a stipulation contract.
I think one thing that, you know, we're talking about, like, you got this in-kind donation, you know, so what is that in-kind donation? Like, how how is that figured? I'd be pretty interested in that. You know, because I said, it's not, you know, it said eleven people have been given total of eight thousand in-kind due to the fact that we've been meeting regularly once a week since April first. Two people have been working part time on this. So what what is, what is that, like forty hours at fifty dollars an hour? You know, what, what is, what is the breakdown of, it's not.
It's not cash.
It's not cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Volunteer hours.
Yeah, volunteer hours. So but what is what does that equate to, or what's the breakdown? You know, I agree. You know, I think that this is a I think this is a good.
He doesn't even cash donations, he has thirteen. Oh, there it is.
No, yes.
Yeah, thirteen eight on the cash.
Eight for cash donations. So if you were to.
Would we be able to have him come talk to us?
Sure. So something I was thinking, obviously.
To clarify some of this?
Yeah, so Jenny's not around next week. We could use the regularly scheduled travel council for getting time next Tuesday and just invite, I mean, both event holders for like a short
I
meeting where we just have a quick interview.
I don't think we need to, I do, I, my personal opinion, I don't think we need to talk to this one. What she's asking for and what her revenue is doesn't even cover her expenses.
Right.
So I don't think she's asking for for too much. I mean, I what?
Makes sense. So so we could, you know.
Or both, if everyone, if that would be more.
Yeah.
Fair.
We could, we could do either. I I'd be more than happy to schedule interviews hybrid. I mean, if we don't have to physically come in, get a total of conversation. Have an agenda where it's like interview, interview and then action item. And we could ask any clarifying questions on this. It gives people time to prepare for it.
Because maybe, yeah, let them know that we're, we're confused on his expenses.
Yeah. And maybe especially if we could, if I could work with one or two, you should write this down and ask it ahead of time. So, hey, prepare to answer this question today. Session. And then that, it does work time-wise because that gives us time to submit on this, the agenda summary for the following week's commission meeting, which is really the timing concern.
I I just looked, I was looking at the Powwow's already scheduled, the arena and everything, so they're, it's like they're good to go.
Yeah. So I think that's a really important question, like, what, what is, what difference is this money going to make? Right. And I think that's probably an important question to ask.
Also, is there, do we know, like, what is the most we have given other events? Do we know?
I only know last year, and what we gave to the pre-conference series was sixteen seven.
Okay.
For them.
Another two or ten of last year's.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no formal kind of guardrails on that.
Right.
Only, that's my only issue with this whole thing is we're completely funding them hundred percent and they're making all the profit.
Right.
When they're making enough profit to fund it.
Which I would assume, probably, they're probably leaving out expenses.
That's what I'm wondering.
So if I think, I think it's probably the best due diligence to give them an opportunity to address that concern. I'd be, I personally am comfortable, like, if the board decides to fund the endurance ride today, we don't have to have them come in for an interview. And then schedule it just a quick hour on Tuesday next week, have an interview, have an action item. So that'd be probably two separate motions. But does that feel like, for all y'all voting members, that, does that feel like a good next step? I'd like to make sure we have a full half hour for discussion. Love here for the last piece.
I'm out of town next week.
Okay.
And I will not have self-encouraged.
Okay.
So.
Jenny's gonna be gone.
Jenny's gone.
You're here. Lacey, are you around next week?
I I will not be, well, it's up in the air, but I can be on Zoom either way.
Okay, and then Daniel, Chanelle and Alex are the other question marks.
Should we have one today?
If you have a question, yeah, because you four are voting.
Is there, um, I mean, could we just give a lesser amount or is it like all or nothing?
You could also do a, you know, I I would, yeah, you could do a lesser amount and leave some in there.
Right.
And we could see if we can solicit an additional application. But I do like the fact that this money is already allocated, budgeted, ready to shoot out the two. We have plenty of money in reserves that we can plan for future stuff. But these are happening fairly soon. Good to be, right? You know, we could do today, just like give three to the endurance ride and fifteen three to the Powwow. And and then just like, can you follow up with some clarifications, basically, rather than doing a, we could be, we, we as staff can follow up.
Can we do like an email with them or whatever and and just?
Yeah, so you could, with your.
Just ask, ask the questions clarified.
Yeah, so with the motion, you could add like a stipulation that we follow up and our staff feel satisfied with that kind of thing. And that, so therefore, if we're not satisfied, then we bring it back in some way.
So I would like to make a motion that we fund the Moab Canyon's Endurance Ride for their three thousand dollar requested amount for the special event grant.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You're voting that wrong. Well, it's done.
Done.
So fast. Doing good. You can make that much.
I will make a motion that we fund Red Canyon Powwow fifteen thousand three hundred with the stipulation that the economic development staff clarify the questions on the expenses budget breakdown. Good?
There's a motion on the table.
I still have some questions about that.
Well, we can, we can leave that on the table and have a discussion.
Right.
I'd, because I'd make a second motion that, that we we fund the Powwow Red, what is it, Red Canyon Powwow fifteen thousand three hundred. Because it
Lacey, what questions do you have?
Well.
We should, much on the table.
Yeah.
Let's, yeah, let's either, let's either second your motion, go to discussion or retract your motion.
I retract my motion.
Okay.
Okay. Because would they clarify, you know, it says that we made a motion if they clarify. So even if they clarify it, we're still approving it if we don't like the answers.
Okay, so that's, it just needs to be worded differently.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Well, not only that, but then I I I still have a question as far as, so I just don't, I, it goes against my green to just spend money to spend money if they don't need the money. And so is that what we're clarifying? Like, if they actually, like, what are we, what are we asking them? How much money do you actually need? How much money are you going to make on this? Like, what are we asking?
That's, I don't want to fund them totally if, I mean, I don't want to fund them if they're making, if we're completely funding them. I mean, you know, for the whole thing.
I think the question is, what is the difference between a world in which we fund this event and a world in which we don't? Right? Does this, does funding it push them over a hump of which they have a huge expense gap between revenues and expenses? And they're going to be at a huge loss, and this is allowing them to make it financially sustainable. Is it, and is this specific amount going to make that difference? I think that's the question for me.
Yeah, I agree. So to me, I'd be, I'd make a motion, make a motion to me.
Are you making a motion?
Well, well.
Well, could I ask about, um, could we take care of a specific thing, like the band?
So I was wondering, can we make a motion to table this until we get, until we have a meeting with Red Canyon Powwow clarifying their expenses and profits for this event?
I second that motion.
I think technically it's postponing.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
I second. Yeah.
Any discussion?
When does this have to be?
So, so for us to process wise, they're, they have a little bit more time, but ideally, we get this done before next Wednesday. Because Wednesday is when we have to get agenda summary sorted out for the commission meeting on the third week of the month, which is the last commission meeting until September. So ideally, we, we
add that in the motion.
No, you don't, you have to say, we, it doesn't have to say when we postpone the meeting to, it's just postponed for the future. So.
That's going to be hard for us to go get it.
So it'd have to be, I I think it'd have to be sometime in the next, and on Monday, Tuesday, realistically. So I don't know Alex's schedule. I think he's back next week. You know, if it's a matter, I think, you know, Daniel's around, he could have made it today if it was absolutely necessary. And if it's just those two, I know Chanelle has like moved in or something right now, so if that's what she could think of it.
So, so here's one more question that I have, though, that would help me make that decision of tabling or not. If this money isn't spent, does that mean automatically it will be saved for another year? Could we still brainstorm on how to use this money in a more effective or efficient way? Or is it, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what the options are here.
So what would happen is that this would end up basically going into that balance of reserves or restricted to kind of this T R T general thing. It doesn't have to go to this particular program. So it just, yeah, it would go into a reserve, unspent from the current budget.
If it's not spent by when? By
Year.
By the end of the year. So typically.
Effective, like, if it's for an event in twenty twenty two, not allocated by the end of August, no one's going to plan on it.
Right.
For September, October, November.
But so why couldn't this be on the, the council agenda for the six?
Oh, September, totally could.
So, and here's, I guess here's why I'm asking.
Could do that to answer your question.
Without sounding like completely self-serving, but there's been a lot of talks just recently about, you know, maybe a possible like county and city type collaboration on, like, event coordinator and something like that. Could that, is that something that this could be spent on? We've talked.
Talking about a person, a position?
Um, or at least for like, the rest of the year or, but eventually a position, not, more like a contract, I would say. So I'm just curious, like, if there is better ways for this money to be spent, or is it this or not?
I wouldn't say so, because this has already been allocated, allocated for twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
So it it could be, if it if unspent, it would go into reserves, but then would be budgeted for twenty twenty three. There's, there's a way you, we could reallocate it in this year to a different funding priority, but that, then you're going to, you know, through, through other people to try to move money around.
Right.
So.
How, when did you get this grant?
It was over the first.
Okay, so it's been pretty fast.
Yeah.
So these guys.
It was a super short turnaround.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, these guys can't be expecting it to be flipped around that fast. And if we, and and then we're going to go back to them and say, hey, we want to see your, your revenue, your profit loss or kind of your projections and stuff, and have that ready by Tuesday. That's pretty fast for them as well.
Hey.
You know, and then getting a best receipt. So why don't we just plan on giving them a little bit of time and and shoot for getting it on the commission's agenda for the six?
I'd be comfortable with that. Would that be? Yeah. And we can figure out the scheduling and make that work for everybody. And I don't think it's a change of motion.
And can we do a like an email vote? Is that allowed anymore?
I think, I think, well, I think what we would do is that if we have, we will coordinate with them. I've been told we can't do an email with other jurisdictions, other places. Okay, but it would, we, it would be a, we just schedule it at some point, it could all be soon. We could have them address their concerns. It could be half an hour.
Okay.
I gotta leave it. Yeah, let's wrap it up. Well, so that motion's on the floor. It's been seconded.
Oh, discussed it. All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
All right. Sounds good.
Because I got to propose the mega five too.
All right. Dear love team that has patiently awaited our, our discussions, maybe I should have structured this agenda differently, but thanks for being here. I, I want to touch on some of the marketing projects that are in the pipe. This, we've discussed much, the fly market campaign, we got three hundred thousand dollars from U O T, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Office of Tourism. We've got a hundred and fifty in the bank. We've got 150 in the bank. This is contracted. Love to execute this fall. And so that's fly market. We've already kind of discussed all of that. If we get the funding from the state for the next round, that basically will just like start right after the, the first campaign ends. And so, um, we've asked for a total campaign amount of 500,000, which would be half Utah, Utah, half us. That's all been approved by commissions, basically ready to go. There's been a conversation that Jenny's kind of led about piggybacking on a campaign that the state office of tourism is launching this fall, kind of the Southern Utah campaign. Focusing on that kind of drive market to stay competitive, basically as people are seeing their numbers come down, everybody's kind of ramping up marketing a little bit. So for us, we could do kind of traditionally, and I'm just kind of piggyback on that. It'd be an additional budget. It's not currently allocated. So that would have to go through the commission. But I think that's something that's a priority. And I think that it wouldn't have to be a huge spend. It would be like a two month piggybacking off what the state's doing. Jeremy at, at Love put together proposal of, uh, what the creative costs would be somewhere between 17 and 23 grand. Put those actual ads together before outside of the media buy piece. So, and then there would have to be the budget piece in the drive market element there. And that's, I think, in large part, you know, addressing a lot of the concerns of local businesses and saying, hey, we're losing money right now. This is that shorter term stimulus type mechanism. The longer term strategy is addressing some of those elements that we're hearing, trying to do like the noise campaign, et cetera. And, and largely just a refresh of the goals of what do like the local was oriented towards, um, and responding to kind of widespread sentiment that it's time for, have a new fresh vision of what that looks like. Get new buy-in from the, the new problems we're facing. And do that in a way that still is balancing a lot of what that video that we showed at the beginning, which is how are you telling an authentic story? And still driving people who are spending more state over. And that's what Alan's here for. So Alan, I'll let you go ahead. You have until the end of the day, pretty much. I have maybe five minutes. So, so if you want to give yourself until five to, uh, just so you know how much time you've got.
Got it. I will, uh, I will be quick then. So I see you all. So, um, as August said, basically this is to replace the do it like a local, as I understand it, and to focus more on responsible recreation sustainability. And what I thought I'd do is just walk you through a few slides on our branding process and how we go about building programs like this.
You should be able to share your screen.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for. You all see it? Yes? PowerPoint? Okay. Awesome. So this is very high level. I've saved you a lot of slides. I don't want to kill you with it because you all understand branding and marketing, but I want to talk to you about the process and what makes it unique here. Second. There we go. You know, simply branding is product of attempt to live and communicate your brand, promise all your stakeholders, right? And invite them to be part of it. Uh, this is different than just selling a product and building a product brand, particularly in tourism, travel and economic development. Now, we want to say what you believe, do what you believe, you'll attract people you believe, the right sort of audiences, the right sort of people that you want to have in the area. And that is our objective here. Our brand planning process involves two models, one, one that we developed, I developed 30 years ago. It's been used with some of the biggest brands in the world. And another agency that I was a partner at, as well as, uh, most of the Utah brands and tourism and travel brands here. From Zion Forever, uh, to Canav, uh, Visit Salt Lake and others. So that love branding process, I'll walk you through its four steps. Very simple. We've also in the last couple of years introduced Simon Sinek's, the golden circle into our process. Uh, and I'll explain why in just a minute. It's part of it. So our process begins with research and it ends with research. It is really driven by focusing on the locals and your knowledge and your vision and hopes and dreams for your area. Uh, so we start with market analysis out of the insights that we developed in that analysis, we developed the brand strategy. Out of the strategy, we develop integrated communication campaign. That's the creative, the media promotions, events, all things wrapped around that. And then we end with that as well. And measurement analyzing what we're doing. So we bookend this on research. Just to touch on each of those four steps briefly. Market analysis, we do a competitive analysis, and that's not just who, who you're competing against. It's a bigger issue. What you're competing against, maybe existing perceptions that may be local pushback and maybe, uh, not having alignment within the community. On what the brand is about. Those whys are as big competitive barriers as other markets or travel and tourism options you may be competing against. Uh, consumers. So we do a competitive analysis there with consumers who understand who they are, what they value. Will we provide them? What does engagement look like? I know we just did a study for you, which I'll show in one moment there. And then third is client Moab. And this is where we spend a lot of time and really working with you and understanding what's true and unique about you, but different from your competitors or issues that are insights that allow us to overcome those competitive barriers. When we do this process, we come in market, we spend days working with you, talking to local merchants and visitors and locals. Doing that in partnership with you. Uh, or off on our own, we'd work that out together depending on your comfort level. Every group's a little bit different, but really spending a ton of time in market. Which we do anyways. You can tell by the picture behind me, I'm a big fan of Moab. I didn't put that up for this meeting. I don't change pictures by meeting, but, uh, there's grand viewpoint. So love, love Moab and the Moab area. So that's not a tough ask. This is that study we done, Adam did, right? The audience segmentation study. So we've developed personas around this. But again, this is of the visitors and what we really want to understand, work through also is the locals and you, particularly as a group. Understanding your vision for the town and the brand. And that is where Simon Sinek's golden circle comes in. If you haven't seen it, uh, Simon Sinek was the number two Ted Talk for, gosh, a decade, I think, on, uh, of, of the Ted Talks. And it's really about starting with why. Um, and I run this process, been hugely valuable and successful. Working with clients like Whitworth Hotels and, and different groups down south. And we really start with why and we get to the purpose, you know, what do you believe? That's what we want to start with. And it would start with your group and during a work group with you all in helping craft and align you all around what you believe, what your purpose is, your vision. Out of that then, the how and the what follow ups, the process, the promise, you know, what is your promise that aligns with that purpose? What do you do? What's the result of the why comes out of that? And this really, um, changes how you market and how people in the community view you also, because we've done all this work, including them. So they feel ownership of the strategy as well as you do. We basically develop a northern star. It's called purpose driven marketing. It's very effective. So at the end of the day, jumping 20 slides ahead, we want to get to this brand platform, the four Ps here, the purpose, why do you exist? What do you believe? What's your contribution to the world? Very lofty, right? Uh, but very valuable. That's purpose driven marketing. It all falls out of that. Okay. What's our position then? Desire perception, we want people to have. What's our promise of value that we build the advertising, communications, events, programs, marketing, branding around to deliver on and create that desire position? And then what's the right personality? Once we have that page and you can hold this page up to any marketing, advertising, branding you do, and see if you're on strategy or if you've wandered off strategy. Out of that, we develop and execute the integrated campaign and all that's involved in that, targeting locals, stakeholders and visitors. Again, we bookend this with measurement at the end. We have a lot of tools here internally and approaches. Uh, but what we're really trying to understand at the end of the day is there's the KPIs that are happening every day, weekend and wake, week out that we report on monthly on campaigns. But in the bigger picture, when you're building a brand, you're going, a brand's built on awareness, perceived value. Our, our awareness, brand associations, perceived value and brand loyalty, those four cornerstone. And research study, as we're more successful, will move up into the right here. We want to attract people who know us for things they care about, that align with the things that you care about. All right. As we get more into sustainability and responsible recreation. So what we're trying to do is go from potentially being unknown with an audience who, oh, they've heard of Moab. What do they know Moab for? We're known for something, hopefully known for good things. What is that? This process will define that. Known for things that are different. How do we differentiate ourselves and known for things I care about? That's where we're really getting to sort of visitors that you want. Not, um, that, back to the study that Adam did, right? The real visitors that we want there. We're going to recreate responsibly. Uh, and visit us and improve our sustainability. So I think I left you with an extra three minutes. That's the quick overview of about, you know, a 50-page presentation. I didn't want to kill you with. You guys, yeah, you guys get it. Again, start with research, really focus on the locals, be purpose driven in your branding, not just how do we get more people to come to town, right? And have people feel ownership of it, where a lot of them, I don't think they did with do it like a local. And we want every into, you know, as many people as we can to be nodding, saying, no, this is us. This feels like us, right? And this is the right way to do that.
Awesome. Yeah. So, and, and my understanding is that Jeremy's putting together kind of the costs associated with doing something like this. We'll, we'll have a, a budget scope. And we'll either have to expand our existing contract, go to a kind of slightly different, you know, go through a different process to make that work. On, or, or budget it out and plan for it for the, starting in 2023. It could also be the easy way to go there. Um, but, but either way, there's stuff that we're moving on right now. And I think for the board members to report back to, we'll say, what is Travel Council Economic Department doing? You know, trying to respond to the immediate concerns, um, kind of in the visiting visiting ecosystem locally. And then we're also recognizing that we have some work to do in the long run. It's really defining who we are, where we're going towards. And, and I think that tourism strategic plan, that I'm going to try to get going as soon as possible.
Perfect timing. And you're together tomorrow, um, focus groups, perfect timing. That's the sort of insights that you want to bring into this process in addition to other interviews and research.
Awesome. Any questions for Alan on this or kind of anything like that? I am going to speak really briefly about the budget process and how this board is going to be a part of that. Thanks, Alan. Really appreciate it. Thanks for your patience. That was a heroic, uh, hangout there.
Well, now I know how to submit an application of what you're looking for. So, you know,
Yeah.
My name somewhere.
I was hoping that was, yes, probably some useful context generally, but, um, could have put you at the front of the agenda. My bad. Uh, okay. We are here and then I will get us out here so fast. It'll be like I didn't even say anything. Okay. So this is all I wanted to touch on, budget time of year is coming again. It felt like it just happened, but, um, my job is to put together a budget request, um, basically, and have a, a meeting with the budget advisory board by the end of October. And so that's, you know, working with Chris and internal processes. I think everybody here knows that the travel council's role is to draft that list to prioritize expenditures for the 2023 calendar year for all monies coming from TRT and TRCCA. Here, I said, there. And that, uh, my goal is to do that process throughout September and to formally approve that by the October, October 11th board meeting and try to have my budget meeting either at the end of that week or the following week. Uh, one process change is that the county commission has to formally review that, um, during the budget process. In the past, it was kind of just an input that they didn't have to formally review and say, we're going to do X, Y, Z. Something that is not formally required, but I think what I'd like to do is have the economic development board kind of recommend a list for that diversification spending and submit that to the travel council board to incorporate with your letter. Just because that will allow us to kind of focus on what our different priorities are, even given the different statutory requirements. And my, my, I guess my takeaway to think about, we don't have to discuss now necessarily, but, um, happy to do so. Is really making sure that you, y'all have the resources, information, et cetera, to, to do that effectively. How can, what, what budget information from the past can I provide any information sessions with like UTIA or anything like that? I want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable and informed that this isn't a last minute thing, but it's very intentionally planned for the 2023 year.
August, can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if it might be wise to put in, or at least have a discussion about, um, some sort of floor or, or like, hey, these are when the alarms go off that we want to maybe talk about bringing some of that reserve money into the marketing budget for next year. Um, just because we have seen numbers dropping lots of businesses. I mean, there's like some pretty serious concerns and, and questions about why money is sitting there. And so I think it would be really good. A, to talk about bringing some of those reserves into marketing and B, as a board, maybe even just discussing, you know, a threshold or something of when, like, when are we alarmed and when do we want to, um, just in the future, we, we kind of have a little more guidance on that?
Yeah. So I think that, um, although the, the like statutory process is like, you're planning for next year. I think it's well within the travel council's purview to say, hey, we're seeing these concerns from the business community. We would recommend that the county commission pull from reserves right now and do a budget amendment.
Okay.
Supplement, um, because right now we are maxed out basically for the year besides like some smaller things.
Right.
And so for, we probably will have to do something like that for the drive market piece. We want that budget. So, so although there's not like a formal process for that, um, that would probably help. When I have to go through the budget amendment process to go get money for that.
Yeah.
And then for budgeting next year, something I wasn't even aware of last year was, you know, obviously there's the budget that you get from the TRT in the year that you're spending it, because that's how it works. But that, I think also during the recommendation list that prioritizes expenditures, you can include, we want to draw this much of the reserves on top of what, what is projected for next year. Um, so that's absolutely like fair game for that process. This for like, for the future looking process.
So maybe can we
Yeah. Good question about like a trigger point or something like that.
Right. Well, maybe that's something we can put on, you know, for next agenda or just, just how the board feels about it. How do they feel like where we, we are, you know, currently? And then, and then for the future process. So.
And so, yeah, I mean, I think right now where we're at, we're seeing that there's a demand that was unanticipated maybe last year. And that there is, there's reason to pull from reserves, increase that bottom line in our marketing budget. And so that then I can go through the budget amendment process with all those people in accounting that I have to, that we have to kind of get those boxes checked. Cause I think there's actually, it probably is some level of appetite for that, given the concerns from here in
And are we gonna know how, like what they're flagged as TRT or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make it super clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks.
Question for you.
Me or Lacey?
No, not, not Lacey. I'm scared to ask Lacey questions. As we're going through this budget process, we're doing things.
Yeah.
And you're, you know, two years into this.
Yep. Well. One year, really.
Yeah.
Comes September.
Is it too much to have economic development and, um, travel council together, you know? And not that you're, I don't think you're doing a good job. I think you have so much going on.
Right.
You know, that is it, is it worthwhile? To split these two after a year?
I, I think that's a good question. I think maybe the better question, rather than like an organizational structure is like, do we need just more capacity?
Yeah.
Is it, is it that like, we just need some more staff?
You're doing a lot of work with, with five people. So much, you know? So much, you know, and that's what, you know.
So a part of it is recommend, recommending that we just have some more capacity. Yeah, and kind of suss out where that is and just what, that could, that's a great point to add to this, cause we do have a lot. I mean, we're in a fortunate position in some ways in that we haven't been super spending money, cause we do have a lot of reserves with this downturn, cause a lot of the general fund departments, there's no chance that they're gonna get that position, but we probably could do that.
Right, that's what, yeah, that's why we look at this budget, you know, it's like.
Well, and particularly for TRT, because that budget, you know, could, um, I mean, I mean, I think it's great to have a specific person for TRT and a specific person for economic development and diversity. Um, and those come from different pots of money anyway, right?
I mean, it could be, it could be like, you know, assistant director type.
Yeah, and that's the thing is it's not, and it's not just you, it's like your whole staff is, is.
Yes.
Each staff member is doing a ton, would seem like the work of two people, you know, for each.
So, yeah, so I think for us as staff.
Yeah.
For me as a department directors, figuring out where those holes are or what, you know, what, what are the three jobs Ben is doing or the two jobs that Melissa's doing?
Yeah.
Or whatever, can we break up and say, you know, maybe we contract out this piece, or if it's super specific and that allows us to do other things, or it's, let's hire another person for this piece, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I think that that's, that would be a great reckon, piece of a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, you guys will bear, slays into this, you know.
Yeah.
We can spend all the money in the world, you know, but if you guys are carrying the burden of it, all of that is crush you and next. Ben's playing a guitar, you know, trying to get money on the corner, cause he just can't take this anymore. He doesn't know his name.
Right, correct.
He's riding, riding a little motorcycle around.
Right.
Yeah.
I can see that. I can see.
Makes it sound like that's a bad out.
I was gonna say.
I know.
I would come watch.
Cool. I'm gonna talk to myself.
But I appreciate the general sentiment of that comment, um, which is how can we?
How can we support you guys? That's what I think.
Yes. Totally.
Give me your milk crate.
For busking?
Have you seen that milk crate?
Oh, on the back of your scooter.
You were talking it up all morning.
It's different than all milk crates.
I, I do think you need more staff for the travel council portion of it.
Yeah.
Um, cause basically there's two, isn't there for travel council?
Robert and Melissa.
Yeah.
And then I'm just kind of running high level.
And then everyone else that's in the offices under economic development.
Well, Rachel will both, which are kind of this admin for everybody.
Okay.
And it's a special offense, it's just kind of more travel.
Well, we, and we have another vista at the budget. We just have to.
That's true.
Do it. Yeah, so it could be helpful for part of these talks to flesh out.
Well, and the other piece of that is, it's really like office space too. How could we more thoughtfully use our internal space to have more desks? The, the storage outside or something like that.
So in gathering, you know, maybe data and statistics for that or whatnot, do you guys keep track of then? Like, like Rachel, how much for time is for travel council? How much is economic development? So you could really get in an idea of this is how many hours are being spent on travel council and this is how many we actually use.
We have to report it.
Okay.
Way at the end of the day, cause it is different uses for the TRT money.
Yeah.
It's not like we're tracking hourly, it's more of a.
Percentage.
Yeah, what are, yeah, exact, 30, 70, 40, 50, so, I mean, 40, 50 doesn't add up.
Right, yeah.
So we do do that.
I need to take off.
Okay, do you wanna?
Yeah, um, so there's no objections or anything else for discussion?
Objection.
No objections.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.